Including. Oh, yes, let me. Start off, just so you know, this meeting is being recorded and will be able to be viewed later. The only people who should be recorded visually are those candidates, myself and the respective neighborhood association presidents. So, welcome candidates. Thank you all for making the time tonight and being here. I usually prefer this in person, but you know, here we are. So we will be doing it this way. The questions you have seen, I will be asking those and certainly repeat them if you would like. As we go through all the candidates and they will be asked and every candidate, including District Two and at large will answer. You will have two minutes to answer the question. I will start the timer. That means go. This. I don't know exactly what just happened to my screen. Let's see here. One moment. Apologies. Something popped up. The yellow means you have 15 seconds and then the stop sign is stop. I will allow after everyone has answered, since there are two District Two candidates and three at-large candidates. If there is the need for a rebuttal, there can only be one rebuttal, not a rebuttal per candidate. So for District Two, after the question, if. Tori Pelletier wants to rebuttal from John Hink's answer, she can do so and vice versa. And if for the at-large Travis Curran, Brendan Mazer and Stuart Tisdale, if there's a rebuttal, only one can rebuttal. I'm doing this only because we will be going till nine thirty if I allow rebuttals from every single candidate. So and we will be strict on that. Kim has the power to mute you. So I wanted the Jeopardy theme music, but I think that was just too complicated. So, you know, it's not the Oscars to drown you out with music either. So I think that is. The format here. I think everybody can hear me and see me. We will begin with a candidate introduction. You will introduce yourself, not me. And we will start with District Two candidates. And since Tori Pelletier is new to this, I will have Tori start. Tori, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I guess to start it off, this is. Hi, everybody. My name is Victoria Pelletier. I know it says Tori here, but I do go by Victoria. That's my full name. I'm running for city council for District Two. And it's always really interesting when I get asked to talk about myself for two minutes. I'm not really sure where I want to begin. But I will kind of start at the beginning. I grew up in Brunswick, so I'm a local Mainer. I graduated from Brunswick High School. I went to college in New York and I've been living in Portland, specifically in Parkside ever since. And currently I work in local government, in a local government nonprofit in racial equity and economic development. And I've been really blessed to have experience in regional planning and public policy. I'm also a board member for In Her Presence and Main Black Community Development. I am a community facilitator for Integrative Inquiries. I'm a BIPOC advisor for Main Community Foundation. And apparently, according to the paper, I'm a community leader, advocate and political newcomer. But most importantly, I'm a young Parkside resident who consistently is worried about how long I'll be able to live here. One of the biggest issues and buzz phrases that we talk about is affordable housing. And we all love Portland, but the rising rent and property taxes make it difficult to. So I think it's really important that we have elected leaders. The issues that we are trying to solve here in Portland. And affordable housing is one of them with a ton of other issues as well. So I think when we have discussions on primarily housing and climate, which will absolutely affect Bayside or Waterfront, but also parts of my Parkside neighborhood. Or when we talk about gaps in academia between black and white students, or even when we just talk about how we're going to provide resources for elderly and our working class, our industry folks and our essential workers. Students or even working class. It's really important to have someone at the table that not only has experience in these conversations, but is actually living these issues in real time, has a track record of community leadership and has the political freshness and energy to get things done. So, hi, nice to meet you again. My name is Victoria Pelletier. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much, Victoria. John Hink.
Hi, folks. Interesting music.
Yeah, I don't know. That's my timer. I somehow can't mute it right now, but we'll, I'll be more on top of that, so.
No, no problem. I'll sing if you'd like.
No, please don't. Go ahead, John.
You must have heard me sing before. I'm John Hink. I am a West End resident for the last 25 years. We're lucky that this is Portland, not the rest of Maine, because otherwise I would be seen as having just arrived. And I am a lawyer. I have done public interest related law that is representing people that have been harmed under, you know, various. Scandals, frauds, defective products and medical devices. I once represented the Fishers and Native villagers and the Exxon Valdez oil spill and people in Maine that were, had their wells contaminated by a gasoline additive called MTBE. We also sued Purdue Pharma over the addiction crisis in 2001. Before it became popular to sue Purdue Pharma. Before, I grew up in New Jersey. I'm willing to admit it. And. I did go to law school in my mid-thirties. I had a bit of time before that. And in a very meaningful way, worked for Greenpeace for 10 years. Here in Maine, beside practicing law, I also stepped up and ran for the legislature and ended up serving six years in the Maine Legislature representing the West End and Oakdale and parts of other neighborhoods. And in 2013, I was elected to the city council where I served for three years. I have a pretty good idea of the challenges that face the city council and I would like to serve. Thank you.
Oh, geez. I will get a handle of that at some point, that music. Thank you, John. At-large candidates, let's start with you, Travis Curran, please.
How's it going? Thank you for your time and inviting me to the forum. I love the West End. I had a great time two years ago when I ran for mayor at the Reiki School with you all. It was fantastic. I am at my place of work right now, but I managed to finagle some coworkers to help me out. And so if I do disappear for a minute, I might have to cut the video just to speak to the manager sort of thing. I appreciate your patience and your time. But I believe we have everything under control. A band might start in about 15 minutes, but in that case, I'll just relocate to a quieter spot. Thank you. Hi, I'm Travis Curran. I'm running for city council at large. I ran for mayor two years ago. I'm an active member of the community, a lifelong Portlander, a bit of a townie, man about town, if you will. But I've been dedicated my whole life to loving Portland and bringing people here. I was a tour guide and I've been in the restaurant industry for about my entire life. I've done many service industry jobs, so I know what it's like to work. I know it's like to rent. I still rent. And I still work all the time and I'm working right now, so I appreciate you guys and your patience. I'm focusing on affordable housing for the most part because it also directly affects me, much the same as Tori. Where if rent goes up, then my rent goes up and then I have to move off the peninsula or worse to Westbrook. And I don't want to, but I'm also here to represent the people. I feel that city council has been really good about handling a lot of the most recent crises, but a lot of the divisiveness and issues presented are sort of leaving out the little guy, the working class, and especially the unhoused community, focusing very much on helping them. And I'm also really focused on climate change and addressing the issues we're going to face in our future. I appreciate the West End a lot because of your beautiful area and it's probably one of the last bastions of some real trees and neighborhood gardens and it's a beautiful place. So thank you very much. I hope to represent you on city council, vote for me number one this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. We will next go to Brendan Mazer.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Great turnout. I see a lot of familiar names on the list. So thank you for spending your evening with us and listening to us drone on. My name's Brendan Mazer. I currently live out on the East End in the Portland house. I see some neighbors' names here as well. I have lived there since 2012. I was born in Portland, went to Bowdoin College and Maine Law. I did not go to Portland High School. I ended up moving out to Des Moines, Iowa when my parents got divorced. So saw a little bit of the Midwest during middle school and high school, but wanted to get back here as soon as possible. I am an attorney. I started working for Shipyard Brewing Company right after law school, doing their regulatory compliance and some real estate for that family of businesses and joined the firm of Perkins Thompson here about four years ago, focused on regulatory compliance and some land use. Currently serve as the chair of the Portland Planning Board, which is one of the reasons that I decided to jump into this race. As Victoria and Travis and I think John alluded to affordability and affordable housing are our key issues that we're going to be facing over the next three to five years or longer. And. I, my experience on the planning board, I've seen good and bad development. I've seen what's working and not working for incentivizing affordable housing, family housing. We're not seeing a lot of. And I really think the knowledge and experience from the planning board would be incredibly useful to the council. I truly love this city, want to continue to see it grow and prosper and hope to represent all of you as an at-large city councilor into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. And finally, Stuart Tisdale, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stuart Tisdale. Portland is my hometown. The West End is probably my hometown within the hometown. I have been an attorney, mostly a court-appointed defense attorney. And also I was involved in prison litigation to correct some conditions at the old main state prison and represent inmates who had been beat up, brutalized. I also brought cases against the police, various municipalities. But I did that full-time some time ago. I got out of that about 18 years ago. I was walking up Exchange Street one day and Father Keegan, rector of Sheverus, was walking down the street, struck up a connotation and I started teaching history the next fall, while I still did some limited court-appointed work, mostly federal sentencing guideline appeals. I love Portland. Portland is a cool city. I have always thought it was a cool city. When I, growing up, I thought it was a cool city. That's why I'm still here. I'm the guy who still lives in the town where he went to high school. I'm the guy who will be buried in the town where he went to high school. My, I have four brothers, four younger brothers. My mother was a teacher at Portland High School. A son and a daughter, I have some grandchildren. Now I'm a semi-retired senior. I want to run because I would like to serve my hometown. I would like to restore faith that government can make a positive difference for people. And I would like to do what I'm told that I do. I'm saying that just because people told me that I lead by example with my seriousness and purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you all candidates for those great introductions. I did want to mention, which I forgot in my introduction. The time we have remaining after the provided questions that were solicited, whatever time remains, we will ask our attendees if they would like to ask any questions. I would ask that those attendees who have questions, direct them at one candidate. Because if we have every candidate answer them, we will, again, we will not have the time. We just will go over. And the purpose of the attendee questions is, is I would hope and expect for clarification on any of the questions that I am asking that had been solicited. So without further ado, like I said earlier, if you would like me to repeat the question when it is your turn, you're welcome to do so. And if not, you can dive right in. Victoria, we'll start with you. Question one, how will you ensure that the city council honors and fulfills the pledges and programs that previous councils have adopted, specifically the One Climate Future Plan and Age Friendly Portland?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm very familiar with One Climate Future just through my work at GP Cog and our sustainability department and our transportation team. And I do believe it's a great first step to bringing the right amount of climate considerations to Portland. As I mentioned earlier in my introduction, my neighborhood of Parkside will absolutely be affected by climate. And so I really look forward to encouraging policy to implement changes in each of the four focus areas of One Climate Future. But I also think it's a really great time for all of us to develop some short-term goals on how we can approach climate from a standpoint of equitable adaptation and mitigation. And so that's small efforts of continuing education around waste reduction, but also more advanced efforts that we can talk about in terms of city rezoning and encouraging alternative modes of transportation. I also think too, if we're talking about municipal climate-led initiatives, especially with South Portland, that this opens up an avenue to discuss not just climate equity in general, but also environmental equity. I think especially given the toxic fumes and unresolved air quality issues that have been happening in South Portland and also in my West End district of Portland, which are continuing to be unresolved and are continuing to be a huge issue for a lot of the Portland West End residents. So climate equity and environmental equity are, go hand in hand and I'm excited to really be part of and lead those conversations. I also think all of these issues fall under the same umbrella and I think this effort 100% needs to be done as a community, for the community with support and outreach and accessibility. So I also think the same can be said for Age Friendly Portland, because I think only 13, 12, 13 businesses have signed on. And many of them are already connected to the city in some way. And I did poll like half a dozen Portland business owners in different sectors and none of them have heard of that program and I think it's a great program. And so I think, again, it's not enough to just have a strong vision for these programs. But I think it's really important for us to think about how we can ensure that City Hall is reaching all of our constituents and this information is not just kept kind of in a silo. So we need to be doubling down on our efforts to reach the elderly, immigrant community, students and business owners. Thanks.
I think you got it all in.
Thank you.
John, would you like me to repeat the question or?
You sent it to us beforehand.
Yes, you know, it's just, it's also for the attendees.
If you'd like.
Well, I, why don't you go ahead, since you're just the second one answering, I'll do, I'll repeat it when we get to the at-large candidates. So go ahead, John.
You know, in some ways, this is a very apt question because the city of Portland and many other governments have a habit of setting goals and making promises and not following through. It's good to remind the people who may serve on the council of some of these promises. Age Friendly Portland and One Climate Future are two examples. The Racial Equity Steering Committee is also made recommendations and requires follow-up from the city council. Years ago, I served on a Sustainable Portland Steering Committee that came out with recommendations. And I don't know how often that was referred to in the years that followed and followed up on. I kind of accept the framing that Greta Thunberg has with respect to the climate issue. She said memorably, net zero, blah, 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 climate neutral, blah, blah, blah. This is all we hear from our so-called leaders. In some ways, I am less keen on the setting of the goals than on putting together the various things that can have us reach the goals. And I would work on that as a city councillor. I would need any one of us who ends up serving on the city council. If we want to accomplish something, we're going to need to get the same kind of dedication from at least a majority of the city councillors. What we'll probably also need is residents who are pushing. And simply by asking this question, what's implied is we have some residents that are interested. We should do this together. I hope I can be involved as a councillor. I would be involved regardless.
Thank you, John. At-large candidates, I will repeat the question just mostly for the attendees. How will you ensure that the city council honors and fulfills the pledges and programs that previous councils have adopted, specifically the One Climate Future Plan and Age Friendly Portland? Travis, we'll start with you, please.
Thank you very much for the question. I would be working to ensure the promises are kept through vigilance and dedication. I'll be working very closely with the mayor and the fellow council members to make sure all the OCFP goals are met. And that, and I'm not the kind of man to make false promises or any sort of clean slate of erasing whatever predecessors have already progressed and accomplished. So I believe that climate change is incredibly important to me, so I'm going to be very, very vigilant about it. You know, Portland can be a true example to the other cities of Maine, that being carbon neutral is not a hurdle to jump through, but it's actually a necessity, it's a priority to protect our future, our children and our children's children. We should be planting more trees. We should be planting more gardens, more flowers, more fruit. We should be, we should be working towards sustainable food culture in order to ensure that we can continue prospering as a city. And I also think aging in place is incredibly important as well. I'm really, it's fantastic that we have the new structure going in on the West End. We, anybody that grew up in Portland man should not be forced to price out. And it would break my heart to see any more luxury condos replace affordable housing. So as far as aging, the aging, I'm sorry, the aging community. I'd be a very valuable asset. I'm connected to a lot of people who volunteer for grassroots activism. And it's very easy to connect. I know it's part of the worksheet there, the, I'm sorry, the community work plan, finding volunteers to help seniors, finding the spaces for them to be, exist. I'd be working in tandem with every neighborhood association to make sure the steering committee, the city steering committee is effective and accomplishes all the goals that we've set out for. And in no way should we ever let anybody have to move out of Portland because they can't afford it anymore. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Brendan.
Hey, thank you for the question. I think when I first saw this question, what came to my mind is something I think John sort of alluded to is we often have these plans and studies and ideas that get drafted in a lot of community time and effort go into volunteers and then they get put on a shelf and not looked at. I think as a council, we need to continue to be educated, have meaningful updates and update the documents as time progresses. What was good in 2017 or 18 may not be the same in 2021 or 2022, for example, on the age-friendly information. So the first thing is education and continuing to draw on these neighbors and volunteers to continue to update, so they're in our face and front and center of our mind. We also have to rely on the city staff, Troy Moon or Linda Ware for the elder services to help us and guide us through these different processes as things come in front of the council. Now, actually, pulling forward, putting forward ideas for how to fulfill the pledges in some of these documents, I think we're starting to do them. We are seeing them. On the One Climate Future, we've made a commitment to lower our emissions. We are requiring electric charging vehicle stations. We've got charging stations that the city's provided across the city. We're trying to lower impervious surfaces. We need to.
It was kind of, you know, the sausage made a little greasy. Oh, God, it didn't let me get very far from here.
Who's speaking? You need to mute yourself.
I did it.
Thank you. I hope nobody ordered sausage. I don't know what that was. So sorry here, Brendan, that sort of screwed us up on the time. I'm going to give you 15 more seconds.
Yeah, that's what, thank you, Ian. And, you know, the aging in place, Travis, is absolutely right. We need to make sure that we have assisted living, nursing homes that are being built in the neighborhoods where people want to live and stay. The, I think Victoria was absolutely right, where I'm not sure if people really know the age-friendly policy. So we need to just get education out there so people know what's there.
Thank you, Brendan. Sorry. Hopefully we won't have any more food order interruptions. All right, and on to you, Stuart, please.
Thank you. How will I ensure? Well, I think the very, the very first thing I can say about that is that I love the goals. I love the goals. I share the aspiration. I'm not a scientist and I can't pretend to have knowledge of the technical aspects of whether or not it is attainable. But it is a beautiful, beautiful goal and I love the concept of Portland and South Portland working together to solve a problem that does not respect city lines. If we could use this as a model to work together with South Portland and the other communities to solve other problems, that would be great, like mass transit, for example. But I do think people tend to be cynical and skeptical of lofty goals like this. So one thing I would do is be an advocate for it. If in any particular case, in any particular case, I would be sure to ask questions about what impact a proposal that is before the council might have on the plan. There has to be ways to make pragmatic Portlanders buy into the lofty goals. For example, maybe give rebates for installing chargers at home for electric vehicles. I think the kind of zoning that I really prefer, which is kind of a mixed-use zoning, where lots of, lots of uses are together in a community, would also favor this plan because it would cut down on transportation and allow people to walk.
Thank you, Stuart. It doesn't look like anyone is clamoring to have a rebuttal to one's fellow candidates. So we will move into the next question. I would just like to let everybody know that excluding myself and the candidates, we have 57 attendees. So that is an excellent turnout, I have to say. So the next question, and this is time for, we will start with you, John. The question is, many people say that councillors should listen to the voice of the people, but the people do not speak with one voice. How would you objectively evaluate opposing public comment on a controversial issue or project?
That's another good question. I think these questions have been formulated by people who are somewhat familiar with government and the tasks. It is true, with many, many issues, in my experience, there will be divergent opinions. In my experience, there will be divergent opinions. You know, I think it's the job of the councillor to take all input that they can get and even look for those people who are stakeholders who may not be aware that the discussion is, is going on and try and engage more people and bring them in to the discussion. That may give you more contradictory suggestions and advice. You have to weigh them. Many situations, I think it would be almost the majority controls. In others, I think you, a councillor needs to evaluate it in light of their own research. The data that's given to them, the information that's given to them and other factors. They're not limited to parroting what people say, but they should take it very seriously. I know this right now because of traffic input. In our district, Spruce Street is, many people are saying people are driving on it too fast. It appears as though most of them would agree that speed bumps would be a good idea. People on Pitt Street in another, another area of the district, they like the idea of speed bumps, many of them. But the other neighbors are afraid that it would drive traffic to their streets. On William Street, some people think it should have parking on both sides like it does now, and others think it should be one side. So these kinds of conflicts do come up and you have to work hard rigorously to solve them.
Thank you, John. Victoria?
Um, yeah, I think public comment is really the framework of our democracy and I welcome it. A big platform of mine is getting individuals more involved in public comment, whether they like something or they don't, because it's really important that if we're pushing the narrative that Portland is for everybody, that we're pushing for equitable community engagement. And I also think it's really important to realize that being a city councillor is quite literally being a public servant. The people of Portland are above us and we work for them. So leading with community is something I look forward to doing so that we can make sure that all voices are heard on all topics. And I think working in local government, and especially when we talk about regional planning and economic development, objective evaluation is something I always have to do. I work with a wide range of perspectives and viewpoints. And as a regional agency, we serve over 30 cities and towns all over Maine, from Cumberland to York County. And all opinions and all voices are always different because lived experience is different. And so as somebody too personally with a diverse viewpoint, one of the parts of my job is listening to every single person, whether I agree with them or not personally, and always making myself available for open dialogue. Because I think to not do so is actually to be an ineffective and irresponsible leader. I also think it's my job to hear controversial viewpoints as a community leader and as a hopefully future councillor. And I think because I, I grew up as a minority, I'm, I'm really good at doing that anyway because I rarely have individuals that see something through my lens just due to the general demographic of Maine and our, in, in our city of Portland. So I think I'm very good at having conversations with people that disagree with me. But not only that, I think it's necessary discourse. I think that keeps you fresh. I think that keeps you on your toes when you have disagreeing opinions. And so I think it also creates an opportunity for dialogue where there wasn't one before. And I think, you know, that's, that's part of being a city councillor. So I welcome those conversations.
Thank you, Victoria. I will ask the question again. Many people say that councillors should listen to the voice of the people, but the people do not speak with one voice. How would you objectively evaluate opposing public comment on a controversial issue or project? This time we will start with you, Stuart.
Okay. Well, I, I take it that the, that the key, the key phrase in that question is objectively evaluate. And I would, if it wasn't an issue that involved, you know, just common sense, I'm sure, and it probably wouldn't be if it were controversial. I would talk to the people who know of the, know about the issue. I would find as many knowledgeable people as I could find to talk to. I found that in, in trying to, trying to understand the homelessness solutions that are on the ballot this, this November. I've talked to as many knowledgeable people as I can find. And every knowledgeable person opens up a new vista on the issue for me. But, but eventually there, there's kind of a critical mass of opinions that you get to, that gives you a sense of the whole, of the whole picture. And, and then, and then I let the ideas settle and I come to a conclusion. I would, but talking to people is key. If it's constituent, if it's a common sense constituents issue like speed bumps, talk to the constituents. If, if it's a more technical issue involving expertise, talk to the expertise. But talk to the people who know. Talk to the people who are familiar with the issue all day, every day. They're the ones who know. Another way to objectively evaluate an issue would be, has to be to consider the cost. Since we are responsible for the taxpayers and money is objective. And what, what will the various solutions cost? And can I justify that cost to my constituents? Will, will the cost be justified and will the benefit be justified? Those are objective, objective questions and the objectivity of money introduces an objective element into the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Travis?
I appreciate the question very much. As far as when it comes to conflict resolution, I'm incredibly well-versed. All of my time in the service industry, particularly restaurants, I'm a bit of a master of de-escalation and conflict resolution and ensuring overall customer satisfaction. Now, these aren't customers, they're constituents. So the, the key here is active listening. I believe every voice at the table should be heard and with respect and courtesy. We have to bring every voice that if there's a conflict of issue, say about speed bumps, I want to hear every side of it. I want to hear everyone and I want to make sure that they understand that I hear them. And I also want to speak to them and understand, and make sure I understand where they're coming from. The key is truly like compromise is, it's going to, it always involves a tiny minor sacrifice for a minor gain. You're going to win some, you're going to lose some. It's almost impossible to make everyone happy, but it's not impossible. You can make everyone satisfied. This applies to city council as well as the community. I understand it's difficult, but we, we can't let clashing egos get in the way of the, our bureaucracy. And I mean, ask any coworker of mine that's worked with me and I will repeat the same thing to them. This is the job. We have to work together, like this, this is the only way we can do it. And I believe that I'm, I'm very efficient at this. I'm a very friendly guy and I, I love, I like, I, when I've been knocking on doors and you're, you're looking at the list of who's a registered Democrat, who's a registered Republican, I'm knocking on everyone. I'm not avoiding Republicans because I don't think they'll vote for me. I'm, I'm knocking on the door because I want to hear what they think. I want to hear what they have to say and I want to talk to them and get them to know my name. And, and that's how we do it as a community. We have to work together. Thank you. That's my time.
Thank you, Travis. Brandon?
Thank you. I, I, I think the word that I focused on when I saw this question was, was listen. I think there's a conception and perception that things are done deals before they even get out there. So I think we need to really slow down and listen to all voices. I think what some of the other candidates have said is absolutely true. On technical issues, we need to rely on staff or the experts to help guide us. But we also need to listen to the residents of the city that are living the issue every day. We are one Portland. We need to approach things as one Portland. And it doesn't always mean the loudest voices. It doesn't always mean the softest voices. But I, I try in everything that I do not to come in with preconceived notions, preconceived ideas. I want to learn and I try to dive as deep into an issue as I can and learn as much as I can. And I think this, these questions build off of each other really well. It's the same with the education on the One Climate Plan or the Age Friendly Policy. We need to just continue to listen to each other.
Ignore that, sorry, Brandon. Keep going, apologies.
Yeah, and I think part of the other issue that, that is conceived is an idea of group think. And we really need to get away from this idea that us or us versus them, robust debate and robust discussion makes for better policy. So just because we may not agree, doesn't mean we're not listening. It doesn't mean we're not all moving in the same direction. But that's, that's the key is we need to listen to everyone.
You have a few seconds left, but you're good?
I'm good.
All right, whether we will stop. Thank you, Brandon. All right, we are going to go into the third question. I just wanted to clarify for the candidates and also those who are attending this. The two neighbourhood associations certainly got more than five questions for you. Often there is overlap and similar themes. So these questions are also in part condensed into one question, sort of reduced from many. So five questions sounds sort of just like lackluster engagement, if you will. So it's certainly more questions, but, and we picked the ones, or, or our presidents picked the ones that they feel are most important to the, to our district and the city. So, uh, question number three. What do you see as the distinction between a district and at-large councillor? Under what circumstances should an at-large councillor vote against a district councillor on a district issue? And I think my order notes are fine. I think I start with you on this one, Victoria. Is that correct, John? You started the last one. I think I have that right. It doesn't seem like there's an argument there. So Victoria, we'll have you jump right in.
Okay, I like this question. This is a, this is a good question. I think it's an interesting concept because at the end of the day, you know, we all represent Portland. I think that's been said before. And so though I'm running for District Two, um, you know, it's not Victoria's District Two and, and the issues we talk about aren't going to be single district issues. I also think, to be honest, this opens up a little bit of a broader conversation on the notion of redistricting and just general electoral structures. But I think the one thing that I'll say about this is that I will always encourage and welcome a conversation. If there's a district issue that an at-large candidate does not agree with. And I have no doubt that there will be times when we all disagree and we will have, we will need to find ways to have an active dialogue and to meet in the middle. So I think if there's a district issue that an at-large councillor and I don't see eye to eye on, I welcome the conversation. I welcome the perspective to see if there's something that I'm not seeing. I think that that's just a general part of being in civic leadership and really any leadership position. And I mean, this, this hasn't happened yet because I'm not on city council. But I think if it did happen, like I said, disagreement is really, you know, a normal part of discourse and a healthy part of being a leader. And so I really look forward to a collaborative discussion where all parties are heard. And I think the only thing is just making sure that there's respect with the candidate who actually, actually lives in the district and gets to say their piece. But again, I think this will happen and it's all about having an open dialogue. It's all about making sure that we are pointing out what we're not seeing. And I'm really open to having those conversations because we are all in this together. We can't do this individually. And so at the end of the day, I think we're all here to make Portland a better, more livable city. And because of that, I think open dialogue is the way to do it. So, yeah, I look forward to those conversations.
Thank you, Victoria. John?
I think by and large, all of the city councillors, most of the time, should be approaching all issues with respect to what is best for the whole city of Portland, what is best for all the residents of Portland. And bearing in mind, particularly those resident, residents who may have traditionally been marginalized. The vast majority of times, issues that come before the council shouldn't break down into a difference between at-large and district. It will happen sometimes and those questions obviously have different impact in different districts. The at-large councillors get to use a line that the district councillors don't. They can turn to a constituent that's talking about something in one district and say, have you talked with your district councillor yet? I know that when I'm running to be a district councillor, the buck stops with me, particularly on anything that is going on in the district. And I would generally expect at-large councillors to be somewhat deferential to the district council, councillor on matters that are taking place inside the district. It is often difficult enough to make sure that you're vetting all the voices in a district on a contentious matter. And the district councillor is going to do that much more and have much more background on it than the at-large councillor will. Other times, a, a district councillor has to simply go to bat for the district and fight for resources and fight, or fight for an outcome that only the district is particularly care, cares about. And that's something I'm prepared to do.
Thank you, John. I will repeat the question for the at-large candidates. What do you see as the distinction between a district and at-large councillor? Under what circumstances should an at-large councillor vote against a district councillor on a district issue? Brandon, we'll have you start this go around.
Thank you. Looking at the distinction, I, I was talking to somebody and I, I can't remember who. But they explained the district versus the at-large, almost like the US House and US Senate, where the district councillors are, are the house and the at-large are sort of the senate overseeing the big, bigger picture, worried about the entire state, not, not the individual districts. And I, I thought that was a nice parallel. I do think the at-large do take a step back. I think there is value in having at-large city councillors. And I think, as I mentioned, this question dovetails well from the last one. In the last question, we were talking about listening to the voters and listening to the experts. And the district councillors are the ones that are, are going to be hearing directly from those district constituents the most. And I think there should be a lot of deference, deference given to the district councillors on issues that are very, very specific to the district. But what we've taken on the planning board is an approach of one Portland. We need to look at the entire city and we're all trying to work together towards, towards one goal. So there are going to be instances, I'm sure, that the at-large may differ from a, a district councillor. If you look at the mayor and the, the other at-large, if, if everyone voted with the district, then there would be no robust debate, robust debate or thought it would be a done deal. And I don't think that's good either. So we, we should be giving deference to the district councillors. They're the ones listening to the constituents on the ground, but always with the focus of what's best for the city as a whole.
Thank you, Brandon. Stuart, you are up on this question.
Okay, thank you. Well, it, it seems to me that, looking at this from the perspective of, of a wannabe at-large councillor, I would say the at-large represents the whole and the district represents the part. And while in theory, what is good for the whole body should be good for the part as well, there, there may be times when a, a constituency within a district doesn't see it that way. And they are adamantly opposed to what the at-large councillor says is, is good for the whole. I mean, I, I can see that coming. And I mean, if, if Amendment A is voted in on the shelter issue, I can see it coming down the line where, you know, a district may be adamantly opposed to a shelter, a smaller shelter being in a certain place. But it may be from the perspective of the city as a whole, that that's a good thing, that it has to. It may not be a good thing, but it's the lesser of evils. So I, I, I can see, I can see that sort of clash coming. And I would have to say that it would be my responsibility to represent the good of the whole. I would try to find an accommodation that would make the part, you know, reasonably satisfied and minimize the rancor. But if push comes to shove in the final analysis, I would have to not defer to the district, but would have to vote for what I thought was good for the whole. But if push comes to shove in the final analysis, I would have to not defer to the district, but would have to vote for what I thought was good for the whole over the part.
You have more time, but.
That's, that's the essence of what I want to say. So.
All right, well then we will put stop. Thank you, Stuart. Uh, and Travis.
Thank you for the question. I believe the at-large counselors should definitely act in the best welfare for the entire city as well. But if there's an issue with the district, then that large counselor should absolutely go to the district and the, the district counselor and discuss it with them, find out what's going on, absolutely inundate themselves with the issue. Not, we don't have to listen to the loudest voice in the room. We should listen to every voice, just like the last question. You know, to bring every voice to the table and to discuss it. We don't have to differentiate between too, too many things here. Typically, if something's bad for the district, down the line, it will be bad for the whole city. So it was in the utmost interest of mine to take care of it on a people level, the at-large counselor is citywide. But that includes every part of the whole, and I'm here to represent them all. I believe that we can all work together. And I mean, truly, I mean, the second part of the question is, when should a at-large vote against a district counselor? And I don't think that should ever truly happen. It has to be cooperative. We have to work together. And I mean, absolutely, the district did elect their officials to be representative of them. And they also elected the at-large to be representative of them. And we have to reflect that. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. I will put the stop sign so everybody knows. Thank you. On to question number four. The phrase lived experience is often used in the community today. How do you describe your lived experience? And how would it make you an effective city counselor? John, we will start with you on this one. You're muted, John. Let me restart the time for you.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead. I will concentrate on things that people might not expect. I, I grew up in a small town, 200 people. And probably in my otherwise ordinary childhood, the most formative event was my father being laid off after 22 years with the accounting firm. And from then on, putting me in a position where I never had very much money. I have lived in Portland for 25 years, but I've also lived in five states and three foreign countries, including a Muslim majority country and a Pacific island country. I, in other cities, I have had varied lived experience, including probably because I needed to save money, living in an area where the place I lived in was broken into five times, twice while I was there. I've had experience with police that are, seem unusual. I was handcuffed to a guy who was pistol whipped by a, a police officer on the Mexico border once. I was detained and while the car was searched, a, an officer brought me to a cell where he sexually molested me. I moved to a new town with almost no money and started finding jobs, managing a movie theater, and eventually getting work with Greenpeace, which I did for 10 years with very important outcomes for my life and very varied experiences, which of course I'd be happy to go on for, you know, a lot longer than this. Now it's time for your red card.
Almost. Thank you, John. And there's that dreadful music again.
You know, you know that those of us who are on the upper age limit of the scale should have longer lived experience time than the younger ones.
That is a fair point. Unfortunately, I am just moderating and did not put the time limit.
Okay, it wasn't, it wasn't an official.
Oh, no, I know. I, but it is, it is a good point. And, and perhaps when the attendees ask a question, maybe someone will ask for you to elaborate. So, thank you, John. Victoria.
Uh, thank you. I'm proud of my lived experience. I'm a woman. I'm black and by Portland and main standards, I'm poor. Um, and none of these are negative identifiers. But it does give me a really different and unique perspective to be those things in a leadership position. I think it helps me see issues through an entirely different lens because I have always existed as a marginalized identity. And I have always been historically under-resourced and underrepresented in pretty much everything. And I think we put a lot of emphasis on a resume and on history, but the reality is if we're a city that talks about wanting to be equitable, then we should be prioritizing lived experience when we have discussions about what makes a great leader. And while I am a very qualified candidate with my experience in public policy and planning, I do have the lived experience of a young working-class Portlander who is constantly worried about how much longer she can live here. That is the issue that we are trying to solve. That's all that we talk about is affordable housing. And I am living the issue that we are trying to solve. Also, the adversity that I face on a constant basis of being young, of being a woman, of being black makes me hustle because I'm one of the hardest working people that I know. And I have the energy to tackle issues and I have the lived experience to handle charged dialogues with people that may not like my existence just because I'm young, black and a woman. I really pride myself on using my lived experience, especially growing up in Brunswick as the only black person in school for a very long time, to coming to Portland to be a community advocate. I can not only understand differences, but I can advocate for issues authentically with policy rather than performative tendencies. Lived experience is necessary in public policy. It can identify key problems that may otherwise be overlooked. It brings a unique contribution to being an effective communicator. And as somebody who has lived experience, I can't wait to bring other people with their lived experiences to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I will now ask a question again of the at-large candidates. The phrase lived experience is often used in the community today. How do you describe your lived experience? And how would it make you an effective city counselor? And this time we will start with you, Travis.
Thank you very much. Um, I love this question very much. I have a very, I have a large amount of lived experience. I will absolutely try to fit it here in the time. I grew up very poor in the woods. I, I was born in Portland, but my parents separated, so we moved around a lot. I inevitably landed in Portland to go to college. I, I didn't get in any other school but state school. My parents couldn't afford to cosign on any loans. I couldn't afford to go to law school. My father worked on the railroad. He built the Down Easter Amtrak. My mother taught first grade and ceramics and they, they barely pulled me together. I, I used to be homeless. I used to be an addict. And I've been a hard worker every day of my life. I faced every kind of adversity. I, I mean, I, I, I agree with Tori so much that we are hardworking people because we had to hustle and we had to make it happen. And so I took jobs and I've become the workaholic I am today. I'm a clear and effective communicator. My, my experience in the theater taught me carpentry, taught me painting. I got to get odd jobs doing that. I've been a housekeeper. I've been a tour guide. I taught at Wayne Fleet for two summers. I taught acting and filmmaking. I've been a teacher. And then I got, I've been a, I've been in every level of a restaurant you can imagine, from the dishwasher to the executive manager of a high-volume kitchen. So I'm a clear and effective communicator. I can multitask. I can focus. I can prioritize. I'm very charismatic through the theater, but because it socialized me before I found that I was barely able to speak. And I'm, growing up in the situation, I managed to become unhoused through the goodwill of others. And then I was able to find an apartment and then watched all my friends get priced out and move away. And that motivated me to run for mayor. And so I ran for mayor on ranked choice voting because I knew that I could be a voice at the table and I'm running for city council to represent everyone else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Travis. Brandon, we will go over to you now.
I think I described my lived experience as incredibly fortunate and, and I recognize that. We all have different lived experiences. I don't think it's meant to one up anyone. I was one of two Jewish students in my high school out in suburban Des Moines, Iowa. Some of the questions I got during that time were, were very interesting. There was even a, a school newspaper that came out with a headline, Dradle, 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 you're getting in the way. So I, I always take that with me in anything I do, but I'm incredibly lucky. And I've been able to serve in a variety of capacities through my, my adult time. I've been on the board of Special Olympics, which has given me a greater understanding for people with intellectual disabilities. I've served most recently on the Main State Music Theater, which has opened my eyes to how incredibly important the arts are to our community, especially during this, this time of COVID and not being able to see live theater and music and getting kids, young adults into the theater programs. Been able to serve on the planning board and take that experience and what works and what doesn't work for, for our affordable housing issues. So I've been able to do all of this because of my privilege. And I recognize that I don't have any children. So my hobby, when people ask is what, what are your hobbies? It's giving back. It's serving on these boards and just trying to do as much good for our community as a whole as, as I can. So that's how I would describe my lived experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. And now we are on to you, Stuart.
Yes, thank you. I hate this question. I didn't think of it in, in the first as a kind of a memoir, but I, I, I suppose you could be, I suppose I could take it that way. One experience I had is when I first got out of college, I was driving a cab in Manhattan. And these two guys got the drop on me. They had a gun against my head. And one guy said he wanted to shoot me. This is after I gave him the cigar box full of money. One guy said he wanted to shoot me and the other guy said he didn't. So they went back and forth arguing over me like good and evil. And eventually good won, I guess, and they, and they let me go. So I wonder if I've lived a life that made that worthwhile. Have I lived up? If I, if I, was I, did I do what I was saved to do? It's been something I've thought about. As, as a lawyer, I, I had difficult questions with guys who were looking at long prison sentences. And it was, it was, I had to convince them of what they didn't want to accept, that maybe a long sentence was inevitable. So I've had experience in, in difficult conversations, and I think that will help me as a city counselor. As a teacher, I, I learned that education is about teaching kids how to learn. It's not about learning content, but how to learn. And education is the way up. Kids have to leave our school system knowing how to learn so they can become indispensable in our knowledge-based economy, that there's no other alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. And now we're on to our last provided question. It's a long one. I'm only going to read it once, just because it is long and since you all have read it before and don't want to lose any attendees potentially. So the question is, we have a 400-unit cap on non-hosted short-term rentals in Portland. But currently there are 598 unregistered short-term rentals that the city is aware of. So there are probably 1,000-plus units in short-term rentals versus permanent housing. What would you do if you were the swing vote and could do anything from banning unhosted short-term rentals entirely to allowing unlimited numbers of them? Victoria, we will start with you on this one.
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is obviously a great question and a lot of conversation around this. And there was, there was a referendum last fall on this that lost by 250 votes, I believe. So it's clear that the city wants action. And it's clear that we need to regulate short-term rentals. And I think that this is a difficult conversation because I get that there are people that are retired and renting out their grown children's bedrooms to pay for their mortgage. And I get that we have young folks traveling around and renting out their rooms while we, while they travel for work. And I also get that this is a tourist city and Portland is very popular, but illegal short-term rentals are not benefiting anybody and it's adding to the housing crisis and continuing to price out Portlanders who really want to live here and want to work here. And I think it's really important that in addition to exclusionary zoning that we're really pushing for regulations of short-term rentals and just putting common sense restrictions so that landlords can't actually run illegal hotels in residential neighborhoods. Because the laws that we have really aren't being enforced enough. And we need to continue to enforce them if we're going to see any change. We can't just do something and then not have check-ins and not have enforced actual guidelines. And so I do think we need to fund and expand the Housing and Safety Office. And I think we need to end non-owner occupied short-term rentals. Not only do I think that we need to do this for Portlanders, I mean, that's obviously a huge issue, but I also think that we need to do this for our small businesses. I think that we have great ins all over Portland. There's a great one in my district called the Mercury Inn. That's in District Two. And if we're not adding these regulations on Airbnbs, then we can't authentically say that we're prioritizing the quality of life for the people that live here. And we also can't say that we're advocating for our small businesses if we're continuing to let this happen. Our small businesses are the backbone of Portland. That's why everybody comes here is to see our small businesses and to have that type of community support. So we need to, we need to go forward with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Victoria. John, on to you.
It sounds like whichever counselor gets elected in District Two, we will have an advocate for more regulation on short-term rentals. I agree with what Victoria said. Short-term rentals have a place. The way we should look at it is the, the, the place for it is the kind that Victoria mentioned. People who've lived in Portland and can, you know, benefit, keep their houses, pay their mortgages by using part of their house as Airbnb. I'm not rigid in that I think maybe there should be other circumstances that would fit the model, would, would fit a model of benefiting Portlanders. For example, when people are traveling or have a sabbatical to another place or something else and, and use Airbnb to rent their place back here. But what we should be cutting back on, scaling back on, and we should be serious about is the absentee rentals. And it doesn't matter whether it's Airbnb, FlipKey, House Trip, or any of them, we should be looking at that. And another issue that's worth mentioning is that some of the policies of Airbnb should be imposed for other reasons. For example, their use of arrest and conviction records when they're screening prospective users. It's unfair. It's discriminatory and it's wrong. I would be willing to see Portland do a very deep evaluation of short-term rentals and make some serious changes. And I think we would have to face down a strong lobby, but there are other places that also are considering this.
Thank you, John. As I said, I will not ask the question again. And I think I have my order right here. I think I have my order right here. Uh, I will start with you this time, Stuart.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, when when I saw that four hundred figure, that four hundred cap, I was astounded that there were so many. I I don't know, there's a cap. I guess that doesn't necessarily mean there are actually four hundred. I'd like to know if there are actually four hundred, but we have five districts. So that's eighty eighty unhosted per district. I I that that's a huge number. Um, I can't believe we have that many. I I I I unhosted. Uh, short-term rentals have a legitimate role. I mean, partly for vacations, but also if if even a Portlander needs a place to live and they don't want to get tied into a one-year lease. I I think it's they have a useful role, but four hundred is way too many, way too many. So I I I would be very open to revisiting that issue. And I and and I'd like to and here, it would be a whole process to to decide how many and where they should be, but that's a process we need to go through. Uh, uh, on the uh, short-term, short-term rentals where the owner lives in the place. I I think they should be able, people should be able to do with their property as they as they see fit. So I I I would be open to allowing uh hosted short-term rentals much more liberally than unhosted short-term rentals. I would make the fees steeper, make the the fees for the unhosted short-term rentals. Uh, should be steeper than they are. I think the first one is two hundred and the second one is five hundred. I don't know why they're so low. I would make the fees for the hosted low. Thank you. Good.
You're finished?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Stuart. Uh. Travis.
Thank you for the question. Uh, this is, this was my flag I waved when I ran for mayor two years ago. Um, I live in a four-story haystack. Uh, across the street was a large apartment building that has eight units in it. Families lived in there and they all worked in Portland. They sold the building for one point three million dollars, kicked everyone out, renovated it, and now it's all Airbnbs. And I deal with them every day because they're my neighbors and it's terrible. And I'm pretty sure they are above that four hundred cap. So I I feel very passionate about this. The original mission statement of Airbnb is to live in the world where one day you can feel like you're at home anywhere. Now, that's why hosted Airbnbs are okay. The original idea is if your family has a guest bedroom and they want to turn it into a little Airbnb, that's cool. But the shell apartments, the unhosted, the investment property Airbnbs are robbing our city of an of of affordable units that already exist. And you guys read the numbers yourselves. They're already there. So yes, I would a hundred percent vote to, I would decrease the cap on unhosted. I would, uh, this is like, if I had it my way, I'd I'd delete Airbnb off the internet, um, to be honest. But yes, you're allowed to do whatever you want with your property, and it is a very, very unique resource, especially for seniors to in order to have a supplement income. But the unhosted Airbnbs have have absolutely got to stop, and it falls on the Portland Housing Safety Office. Uh, their their names are on the internet. They have phone numbers. I've called them and I'm waiting on calls back. Uh, I believe if you are running an illegal Airbnb, you get a letter in the mail. And that's it. So we definitely need to give that office more teeth and a bit more discipline. And a really good work to stop all of the illegal Airbnbs because they're everywhere. And so uh, there as far as, there's also a multitude of other websites similar to Airbnb that are going to crop up. But Portland can pass enough ordinances with enough regulations strictly enforced, we'll get, we'll fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. And Brandon, now we are on to you.
Thank you. Um. Reading this question uh with the number of unregistered short-term rentals. What it says to me is we have an enforcement issue in the city. Uh, the four hundred number went through a pretty significant robust analysis by the Housing Committee, by the Council. Um, and my fear would, if if we just completely scrapped, it would be uh, those thousand units aren't going to just automatically disappear. We we need to enforce the regulations strenuously that are are already there, and that means probably giving more support to um the department. Um, but we've, it's not just in this area, but in other areas of the city, I think we've created a culture of it's easier or better. To beg for forgiveness than ask for permission. So we need to make sure that those unregistered units. Are taken care of and put back on to the long-term rental market. By getting rid of it completely, I don't think we're actually going to solve the problem. What will likely happen is we'll have a thousand plus unregistered units that we can't enforce. And then we, in essence, are criminalizing uh those that are trying to play by the rules, that are paying the fees, that are registering their units. The other thing, you know, there there are a lot of critiques of Airbnb, but there's also some benefits. But if you look at the average hotel price in this city, it's five, six, seven hundred dollars a night. And our access to our city for for young people, a lot of my friends can only do Airbnb, can only afford it. Um, you know, I looked, it's it's still almost four hundred a night for the inn that that Victoria mentioned. So it does give access to our city. It shouldn't just be for the wealthy. So I think enforcement is really the first step. Uh, and then we can reassess. If if we can't get what we want through enforcement, then then we can look at other options.
Thank you, Brandon. And uh, thank you all candidates. That concludes the round of our uh. Five questions uh that were solicited. We are about ten minutes to eight. I do want to give the attendees uh a chance to ask some questions. Um, I do want to thank you all for being so very civil. No one had a rebuttal that um. You know, I think you all sound like you are are basically on the same page on a lot of these things, so um. That would did not cut into our time. Uh, Kim, are you seeing any raised hands at this time? Okay, you do not see any raised hands. I will maybe give it another thirty seconds, and if we still don't see any. Um, I have just a clarifying question on number one, and that I would ask of the District Two counselors. Um, because I live in District Two and I know this is important to District Two. And the city as a whole, but it is specific to District Two. Still no raised hands, Kim?
No.
Okay. Uh, so the clarifying i- is from question one, um, which was. Ensuring the One Climate Future Plan and Age Friendly Portland. And my clarifying is related because One Climate Future, you know, one of the things that helps is less driving. And age-friendly Portland, if you can get around on foot and your wheelchair or your walker, or if you have any disabilities. So and if you can't, then you ask someone to drive you. So as you probably have seen in the last year, Portland is finally complying with the American Disabilities Act. And putting in tactile ramps on intersections and sidewalks. However, the sidewalk between the ramps is often still not navigable. The bricks are unaligned, missing, they are wavy. How will you address this? Because this has been mandated by the federal government, and yet our city seems to. Believe that just the tactile ramps are doing the whole thing. And I will have, um, since we have about seven minutes left, I'm going to give this one minute. And I will start with you, Victoria, on this. And if it's not clear, I hope it's clear what I'm asking for clarification. Because uh, I think the sidewalks are really related to both One Climate Future and Age Friendly Portland. So.
Well, are you asking, sorry?
How would you, in short, how would you, as 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 counselor, District Two counselor, get on that? I mean, sidewalks are a huge thing with our population and them just being terrible. And if you have terrible sidewalks, you're more prone to drive because you can't get there. And if you're old and the sidewalks are not good, you're also going to most likely drive or have someone drive you. So these are things that relate, the sidewalk specifically, I would say, relate to One Climate Future and Age Friendly Portland.
Yeah, I think I I think it's important that we're making sure that Portland is a really accessible city. And I think if we're still having issues with sidewalks and people aren't feeling like they can get from one place to another. Then that's an issue in terms of education, and that's an issue in terms of making sure that people feel like they have a city that's walkable. I also think that just opens up a conversation surrounding how we're making sure that we are presenting Portland as a city for everybody. So it 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 needs to have, it needs to be another conversation. It needs to be another discussion with the community. So that I can make sure that I am understanding everybody's issues and then bringing that to the table to see what changes that we, what changes we can make in Portland. And I do think that that ties directly into getting people out of their cars and getting people to walk more and to use public transit more. Which is another conversation as well. And if we're not, if we're not creating an accessible city in terms of Portland and especially in District Two. Then I think we're going to continue to have these issues. Was that, did I get one minute or two?
Uh, that was one minute.
I was like, that was.
That was quick. One minute, two minutes seems long. If if you, if you have ten more seconds to get in there, I will allow that. That's fine, but I think.
That's okay. I was just like, oh, my gosh, I'm already done. I I think again, it goes back to education. It goes back to community conversations, which I look forward to having. So thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And John, as a past counselor, you know, you heard plenty of this about our sidewalks, and here we still are. If you walk the sidewalks, so they're not exactly complying to making Portland age-friendly, much less ADA-compliant. So how would you uh, what would you do here in this case? And you get one minute.
Um, yes, we should have those conversations. I do think um, some things we know will emerge, and that is that it's inadequate. Our pedestrian, our wheelchair and our bike infrastructure. Um, I would also point out that if you take a walk down Congress Street, which I do often, there's a couple of lights where at times. Every single direction for every method of transit is getting a red light and no one is moving. Uh, unless you're willing to jaywalk, which people get used to doing because they're tired of waiting when they don't have to. Um, but uh, making it, uh, since it's federal law, it should be a priority. Uh, for that reason, as well as to be an open and compliant and welcoming city. Uh, we're going to hire a new manager. It's a very good time to raise this issue so the new manager knows.
Thank you both for clarifying that. I'm sure the other candidates are probably on the same page there. I also just want to clarify. Both these items, sidewalks, I mean, these are low-hanging fruit in terms of like easy achievable things that will help. Uh, those aging and get people out of their cars and on the street and on bikes. So um, you know. If you know the city, you know, there's there's easy things that can be tackled first. Um, so that leaves us.
Can I just, could I just?
Absolutely.
But they cost money, so it gets to prioritization in the city budget. So.
Yeah, uh, this is correct. They do. So we'll look to the counselors to work that through for us. Some of the big things that, you know, Bretta talks about, blah, 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 are really big money and nothing gets done there. So let's at least do something. Um, or or discuss doing something. Stuart, you you.
Can I say something?
Desperate to say something to this.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, if you pointed out an issue that's ADA-uncompliant. Then uh, one option would be to get word to uh an ADA litigator. And force the issue.
It is, and and that that is a possibility, and I think i- if you are at-large counselor. Uh, and you walk around the city and you see these instances, then I would hope uh your constituents in the city as a whole would ask you to do that. It's always a little difficult with hilly cities because even the the hilly sidewalks are are hardly ADA uh compatible or compliant and it's not really possible. So this gives us uh on the clock two minutes, but you each do get um one minute for closing comments. And I did not write an order here for this one, so I'm just going to look at the screen and I'm going to just pick you randomly. Uh, Brandon, I will start with you for your one-minute closing statement. So.
Thank you. Thank you all for for spending uh the last hour and a half with all of us. Uh, I always find these uh forums uh informative. I learn something new every time. Uh, the the big topics, I think we're all aware of. It's going to be the affordable housing, development, public transit. That are, that the city is going to be facing over the next three to five years. And I think the subject matter expertise that I can bring to the council is is going to be invaluable. Uh, my experience on the planning board where I've seen how affordable housing is and is not getting built. What is incentivizing and decentivizing affordable housing, uh, better transit, family housing? We're not seeing a lot of family housing being built. These are the priorities that we all know we need to tackle and will be top of my mind as I service as city counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, we will next go to John. One minute.
I think what this forum demonstrates is that uh, the candidates are very engaged and well-informed. Uh, what I find is people all over the city are engaged and well-informed, and there's a great deal of shared. Uh, appreciation and love for the city. You know, given that we have a lot to work on uh to help. Uh, continue to build the city of Portland uh to be something uh that is treasured by all. And uh welcoming to all, and I I'd like to see that happen and I'd like to be part of it. Um, I would uh say that uh my experience shows that I can actually uh tee issues up. And get them accomplished, and I would like to have another opportunity to do that.
Thank you, John. Uh, on to you, Stuart, please.
Okay. Uh, it was, I said, I said at the outset, uh, I've I've lived here forever. And I could have gone away. Uh, I'm well-educated. I could have gone someplace else. My brothers did, my kids did. But I I've always stayed because I just, I I like it here. I love, I I love Portland. And one needs love to do any job well. To do a job extra well takes not just skill. But love and pride in doing it well, love for the work and pride in doing it well. And um. I have that love. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Victoria. One minute. It'll go quick.
Okay. Uh, so the news calls me a political newcomer. I get that a lot. Um, and while I am, I suppose that I also feel I am a very qualified candidate. I'm an energetic candidate. And I hear a lot of the word experience when we talk about leadership, but the two important words I always say. That counter experience are access and opportunity. I can't get experience without opportunity. I can't get opportunity without access. And I know a lot of things are happening in Portland right now that are scaring people and feeling like there's some toxicity that's happening in Portland politics. When you go vote next month, go vote with your values, not with your fears and with your hopes and your enthusiasm. And with that equity word that we all love to talk about, I really look forward to leading with community. I look forward to making Portland a place for everyone. And especially getting to advocate and highlight for our elderly or marginalized or unhoused or low-income and our working-class individuals so that the city is a place that we can all call home.
Excellent. Thank you, Victoria. And Travis, we have one minute.
Thank you very much for the question. Uh, my name is Travis. Thank you all so much for watching. I'm very impressed with the turnout. Um, uh, what I lack in experience, I make up for with gumption. Uh, I ran for mayor with, because of ranked choice voting in order to get my voice heard, and I realized it was very feasible. I haven't sat on a board for years, but I'm I'm ready to sit on the board for years. I'm ready to help out. Uh, access, like everything Tori said, with access, that's very important. But it's time to rethink Portland. We just have three seats open up. We just have the city, the police chief leave, the city manager leave. Portland's about to change drastically in the next five years. I love Portland Maine more than anything else, and I'm dedicating to protecting it and representing everybody equally and fairly. I am not part of any political organization. I don't hold allegiances. I hold allegiance to Portland and the people. I'm a people. I'm a people person. And I hope to have your vote on November 1st. I promise to represent you in our interest in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Well, that is the conclusion of our candidates forum. I'm usually, for those who know me, a stickler for the time. We are about four minutes past eight. So I think we did pretty good, given these questions and at times my ramblings, which also happens. So I would like to thank all the candidates very much for attending. It was great to hear all your answers to these questions. I want to thank the respective neighborhood presidents, board members, and all the attendees who participated and listened to this very important election and debate, or not debate, forum we had here. A little plug for Western Neighborhood Association, which I'm a board member of. We do meet monthly. Currently, it's over Zoom. We do often have our District Two councillor attend as well. So once that person is elected, I would hope that candidate joins us as well and that the public attends. I think that is it. I just want to say thank you again very much. Unless Ann or Kim has something to say, I would say we will end this. And I wish everyone a great night and get up there on Election Day and, you know, keep putting away for the city, everyone.
Thank you. We'll put the recording on YouTube and our website, wannamaine.org.
Thanks for your hosting.
Thank you all. Take care.
Have a good night.
Bye. Thank you.